We're going to start our Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, April 10th. Starting out a little late because me 7:04. First thing we're going to do is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to move on to item two, public speak. Kathy and Mike Blazin.
Hi Jeff.
Hi Kathy.
I hope that all the board members received their invitations to the May 18th dedication for the 175th anniversary celebration that will be held on from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Perhaps a little bit short of in 7:30 because we understand you all have to go to work the next day. Um, and I want, I personally want to thank you Jeff McGuire, our first selectman for speaking at the dedication greatly appreciated. I also would like to say that on Saturday, May 20th, from 11 to four, it's the 175th anniversary festival. It will be held in back of the AES. We have all sorts of fun things, food, everything you can imagine. Um, and it's for the family. So we hope you will come and have a wonderful time. It's all free. There's no charge. So please come and enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Mike, you got anything?
No, I'm good.
Good. I want to give you the opportunity. All right.
Okay.
Problem. Sorry, my mouse has given me problems. Linda Fish.
Just here to listen.
Okay. Joanne Ebert.
Seth, thank you.
All right. And is 2345 Attorney O'Brien?
Yes.
All right. Glad you could join.
I'm here to listen too.
All right. You're the best. All right. So let's move on to item three additions and deletions to the agenda. Do any of the other board members have anything to add to the agenda?
Uh, Jeff, I would like to add nine F. Purchase a vehicle for senior transportation under old business.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Adrian?
No, I'm good.
Scott?
I'm good.
Okay.
Jay?
Did we? No, we gotta add that. Is somebody gonna add that? Scott, why don't you add that? Does anybody else have? Well, we're going to go through that one. So let's see, that would be new business.
Yeah.
And we'll do it at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll do. One second. Oh my gosh.
Is that something like you want me to ask or you guys?
No, 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 no. You're good Jay. Just hold on for one second. It's some computer problems. So we're going to do 10E. Public Works. What's that called? Gravel pit? Or how do you, how did you phrase it there Jay? Just give me the term.
Timber far, timber harvest at the gravel pit.
Yeah. Gravel pit, timber harvest. So I'm gonna. I'm going to request 10E, um, Public Works gravel pit timber harvest. And we're going to actually move that to the beginning of the meeting. So that we can sit there and move Jay off if that's if everybody approves. So does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? Nope. Okay. Uh, so we have two items that are out there. Nine F, um, senior vehicle purchase and 10E Public Works gravel pit timber harvest. Somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All right. Um, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, four, nothing. Okay, so. Let's uh, let's move right into 10E and the Public Works gravel pit timber harvest. So Jay, if you could, could you please just sit there and give um, a brief explanation of what you're attempting to do? And then we can have some discussion on it and sit there and see if we can vote on it.
Okay. Uh, well, thanks for letting me add uh, this to the list of your busy schedule. Uh, so. To make some more air, have the ability to get rid of our spoils, a little bit more room. So in doing so, we took down a few trees, opened things up. And as we're in at what we're, what we're doing, nice bit of gravel, something that we can now need uh, for various projects, our drainage projects, so whatever the, whatever we may need gravel for. And then looking at the area, that specific area uh, up on top on, in the back, a little further in the back, there was some big timber in there. So it was suggested that uh, by the guys in the crew that we look into, see if we can harvest some of that timber rather than losing it. Um, because you know, once we get into that embankment, that timber's there. Rather than just cutting it and letting it lie. Um, and also uh, if possible, depending on how much was there, if we'd be able to use the monies for some equipment that we're looking for. So that's kind of the spiel. I had, uh, we had it looked over. And uh, there's some good wood in there. And also there's some wood that's, you know, it's, it's died off already. Unfortunately, it's, you know, two, three years that some, a lot of, some of this wood's dead. So it may not be suitable other than firewood, but there's still some good timber in there and it's worth something. We're hoping we get uh, for uh, you know, somewhere, I don't know, 10, $15,000 if, if we're lucky. 10ish we'll say. Um, you know, it's a 50% split. So the contractor that would come in, that would harvest, they would get their portion, we would get ours, or the town will get ours, get theirs. So that's really what we're asking if, if it's uh, something that we could pursue and whether you guys agree about it.
What piece of equip, what piece of equipment Jay?
Well, specifically we're. We've got a 19, a 1979 uh, tag along trailer, 20 ton trailer. You know, that's what we're using to pull the excavator around and, and uh, you know, any of the bigger pieces of equipment. We gotta put some money into it. We gotta, at some point, we gotta pull the, the rims and everything off and check all the brakes and go through that. It's working trailer. The tires on the trailer are dry rotted. Um, we're going to have to replace the tires. It's old. It's been repaired a couple of times over the years. Uh, we do, we have found a used trailer. Um, it's a 20 year old trailer. That's had the sun, it's just a little bit heavier trailer, a little wider, uh, which would better suit our needs. Um, and uh, that's what we were looking for. And then depending on what other, uh, if there's anything left over, we could maybe just keep it aside and look towards maybe some attachments for the excavator. We're talking about maybe a clam uh, for the end of the boom, something that we can, you know, when we interchange buckets. We're doing, when we're doing our tree work.
Have a fork.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry. That was on, that was on. So Jay, the last thing is Eric, have you gone down and looked at this?
I have not.
So Jay, could you, oh Jay, could you, um, I have a quick question for you. I know we had a little discussion and email back and forth, but could you elaborate a little bit on the, what's going to happen with the tops and the, the remaining lumber that's going to be left?
Well, it, the lot depends on the contractor. So most, most contractors, if they're just going for the, the, uh, the big timber, you know, they may or may not take all of the tops or most of the top. You know, it just depends on how much is there and whether it's worth their while to, to go after. Some of them will also use the tops for the, for the firewood, which the firewood is, would be a separate amount, you know, they'd have to put it together and figure out what the uh, they charge that out by cordwood. So that there's a percentage of that. That is in addition to just the timber itself, you know, the good uh, the good logs, you know, there's a uh, that's a, the good, the better logs bring a higher percentage and the, and the, obviously the firewood is a lot less. Sometimes they just leave the tops in the woods. You know, uh, to just stay there and decay into the.
Yeah, we can't do that in this case, right? Because we're clearing the property.
Well, we're clear, we're clearing where the gravel is. So the, the trees on the backside of this hill, that, that area would be cleared off, yes. So we would be pulling that wood off, but there's other areas of the property where we're just going to look in to grab the, the, uh, the big timber. Where the forestation of the property would still stay there. We're not looking to clear cut those areas, only the area where the, where this gravel, this hill that we have.
So just for the other, yeah, just for the other board, the rest of the boards in the loop, I discussed with Jay about the possibility of making these tops and these trees available for any resident that wanted to go and harvest them for firewood themselves, because we do have some residents that are, you know, uh, struggling financially and, you know, the heating oil is expensive and they, they heap by wood alone. So I asked about the, I just asked about a suggestion to use some of these, you know, allow residents to harvest some of these tops and Jay had some concerns. So um, I don't know Jay, could you?
Yeah, I guess. I guess my cons, my biggest concern is, is I've been this through this with my previous employers. You know, where we dedicated an area to bring wood for the residents to uh, partake and take in the wood. They come in with their own vehicles and equipment, chainsaws. Uh, you know, and they buck up the wood for their, for their purposes. The problem with that is number one, there, there is a liability factor. What exactly that is, I don't know. When you formalize an area for people to come onto your property. Um, now you have to manage that area. We were constantly moving wood to, you know, you come in with a dump truck full of wood, you dump it on the ground and it just falls on the ground. People come and they start picking the way through it. And then they can't get to the stuff that's on the bottom. So then you gotta go and move it. Then it's all over the place and you gotta move it again. And then when they're done with the stuff that they don't want, now you gotta pick that up and get that out of the way. Logistically, it gets in, gets to be a real, gets to be problematic. Can it be done? Sure, it can be done. If you, if you're inviting people onto your property uh, to go out into the woods and cut tops, you know, they got a four wheel drive or tractor or something, they're gonna if you're going to allow them to go out there and, you know, take care of the stuff that's been left there after the fact, uh, I don't know what the liability factor of that would be.
Jeff, I, I love the concept. I do think the liability issue would be too great. I mean.
We can have Dennis chime in on this because there is a, there is a liability, there is a statute in Connecticut, the general statutes that says that any municipality or landowner is exempt from liability if they allow somebody to come in and harvest firewood. And you know, currently on my street on Chadwell, the town did come through and harvest a bunch of wood and we have a bunch of logs sitting there. So in my opinion, it's really no different, the logs that Spundup leaves or the town leaves. Uh, there's, there's really no difference between those situations and this situation. So um, going forward, I would just like to clarify this with the town attorney, just to make sure that, you know, in the future we, we come to these crossroads with a big logging operation, people want to come on, then we have some we have some sort of answer for it.
Yeah, the, the only comment I'd make, add to that Jeff is those logs that we leave on the sides of the road. It, you know, it's, it's sporadic, it's open. It's, you know, there, there's a place for people to, you know, although they're in traffic and, you know, on the side of the road, but there's a place for them to escape. You know, and it, and it's, you know, you show up for six or eight logs and you move up the road to the next one. You're not, you're not working off a big pile of wood that potentially could roll down onto your foot, your leg, whatever. That, that, that's the kind of stuff that when you start piling wood in a location, you have to separate it. You can't just leave it there for people, you know? Those are the things that I experienced.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to have the discussion.
Dennis, Dennis.
Yeah, I, could I talk? Well, Dennis, what's Dennis think about the?
Well, Dennis, I, we don't need it today. We don't need it right now, but Dennis, just put that on a list of potential things to just.
Put it on the list. Do you hear me?
Yeah, Dennis.
I was thinking. Save you the time.
I was thinking in terms of a waiver.
I can save you the time.
If there's a statute, oh, I'll, I'll look at it.
Adrian wants to save us time. Adrian, save us time.
Connecticut general statute 52 dash 557K produced in 2019 or 2018, sorry. Um, however, it only applies to entering or harvesting forests, harvesting firewood with, without charge. And basically, if, if you go to section B, it's gonna, it basically talks over what the, what, what you're, when and, when and how you can do it. But it, whether you charge or not doesn't matter, but it has to be, the, the harvesting has to be for nonprofit organizations, nonprofit corporations. Or for distribution to other nonprofit organizations or nonprofit corporations. It does not apply to individuals themselves.
I'll take a look at it during the meeting.
Scott, go ahead, please.
Thanks Dennis.
So Jay Tuttle.
Yes, sir.
If we could get uh, what if we could talk to the actual harvester and ask him if he could pull the top up the hill? Take the log off it and leave the top in one spot there. And then uh, get the, get the that, get the taxpayers if they're up there, if they wanted the wood. See how that would work. Pull, pull all those to the top of the hill, lop off the sections that we're not going to use, the smaller like three inch diameter wood and leave that on the side of the hill, pull the firewood up to the top of the hill. And um, lop the log off and. I mean, listen, I, I'm going to tell you Scott, you, you've been to my house. I have property here. I have offered um, firewood. You know, I mean, I've been here, you know, I've owned the property since oh five. So um, and it always is a problem. People, you know, even when they're getting something free, they leave a mess. You know, they leave a mess. I've got tops all over the place that people, you know, pick through and they take what they want. They leave the other crap. And just like Jay said, they, you know, I've, I unfortunately have had people get hurt trying to roll a tree and it catches them because they wanted to cut one piece and didn't want to cut another, or you know, they didn't bring something to prop up the, the wood. So they didn't want to cut in the dirt. So they're trying to roll it to get a secondary cut and it's just a, it's just a bad idea. I, I would not vote in favor of it. I, I've been through it on my own personal property and it's just not worth the aggravation. And they have a lot of stuff to do. I'm real, I'm trying to uh, speak to what Mr. Murray brought up that, you know, condition. But you know, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I believe that it's just going to cause more trouble than it's worth. Yeah. Not that I don't like the idea. I think it's a great idea. I love the idea. That's why I tried doing it on my own property and I finally got to the point where unless I really know the people and we have an agreement ahead of time, I don't let people come and cut wood anymore.
Yeah, and then, but that brings back my point about leaving, you know, when the town's cutting wood and it leaves it on the side of the property, should we be taking it away and putting it somewhere? Because it's the same situation. Same situation. So that's why.
Those are the things that, you know, we speak to this in our, in our public lists are all the time, hear it all the time from all different towns. And every town, uh, just about every town just leaves it on the side of the road. What gets taken in those individual spots gets taken because people have the ability to pick through it because they're smaller piles. And, and it's in kind of an open spot, mostly controlled because you're just there. Then you move on to the next part. If you're going to put it in an area, you better have a lot of room. And, and up there on top of the pit, we're trying to use that as a work area right now to reclaim some of the different kinds of materials that we're trying to use to save, you know, taxpayer dollars. Well, if we're going to put wood in there, that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I just wanted to have the discussion, that's all.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, I believe that's a very valid discussion, but maybe we can do it at our next meeting and talk about how we actually deal with uh, the types of materials that are left on the side of the road, because I do agree with you Jeff. So let's sit there and.
I mean, the side of the road, I mean, to be candid, we don't encourage and we don't discourage people from taking wood from the side of the road. You know, we, we neither encourage nor discourage, whatever happens, happens. And so, and then if it's, you also get into a situation where it may be within the town boundary line, but homeowners take possession of, of that parcel and say, well, it's my 20 feet or whatever, you know, I know the town has a right of way, but it's my property. I want that wood. And so that's the other situation you run into is if you decide, well, I'm going to start pulling it, well, you better make sure that it's on a town aboyed and parcel, because if it's in the right of way, the, the homeowners will come after you. They're going to want their, their, you know, I've got a hot 200 feet of frontage and you cut two trees down, where's my two trees? And you'll see people putting signs out saying, don't, don't remove firewood or don't touch wood or whatever, whatever. So, you know, I think we just kind of leave it the status quo. You know? Don't encourage it, don't discourage it. People take it, they take it, good for them. But you know, we're not gonna, I don't want to get into managing this. I think we have enough stuff to deal with.
Okay, so, so it is still, um, maybe it's more of a discussion for Jeff Murray and me about how to clean up those areas and do a better job. And do we put resources back to it? So let's, but let's talk about that at another meeting. So let's deal with the issue that Jay raised. Does anyone?
I don't have a problem with harvesting, but I do have a question because I have not seen that trailer, the discussion on a trailer come over to CIP.
It hasn't. What Jay, and, and this is a technical thing that Adrian, you're probably best positioned to answer. If we harvest the timbers, you know, is it against our charter to sit there and use those dollars to fund a piece of equipment? And, and anyway, who has to approve it? I mean, I don't think anyone would have a major problem with approving something like that, but what is technically, what do we need to do to get that done?
Well, I mean, because of price, are you talking a $10,000 trailer?
Jay?
The tra, the trailer new is $40,000.
No, the, the replacement that you're looking to purchase?
10,000.
So it's got to go to CIP, it's got to go to Board of Finance.
Correct, correct. I mean, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse because, you know, we didn't know that all this was going to happen. You know, we're, we're, we're cutting trees to make the property accessible and we found some real good gravel. And then we started looking at further beyond if we keep using this embankment, you know, to dig, because basically we're, we're digging on the opposite side of this area that we're, that we've been using, which is running out of good gravel. So we opened up the other side and now we find good material and on, on, on that same side, there's some big timber there. So we're just, we're thinking ahead a little bit.
And Eric would be able, I don't remember, what's our number for town meeting?
Uh, at which point it has to go to town meeting?
Yeah.
In terms of a spend?
Yep.
I mean, I think the Board of Finance can approve up to 0.5% of the budget, not including the RAM budget. So ballpark, about $40,000.
Okay, so you're safe there. The Board of Finance could approve it. And um, you know, if the fines are incoming, they could certainly allot them. They just have to, you know, as part of their motion, they just have to say where they want the funds taken from. So. There's no, there's no, there's nothing in the charter against doing it. I don't believe it's directly addressed. So then you fall on state statutes as to how to address spending.
All right. So do we want to sit there and does someone want to make a motion to sit there and move this forward?
I make a motion that we move forward the um, that we approve the timber harvest in either case, um, without restriction. Um, and um, ask the Board of, the CIP and Board of Finance to consider using those funds for capital equipment purchase for Public Works.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion on this topic?
Yeah, just that one thing, you know, a lot of this is fairly close to the river. I don't know what of this is in the 200 foot upland review area. So I mean, I think this is gonna have to get reviewed prior to being, I feel like you're gonna have to deal with the wetlands commission in some form or other uh, regarding this, but I honestly don't know the rules regarding timber harvest. Maybe Scott can weigh in on that.
Yeah, it, it, it will have to go to wetlands.
Yeah, I have to, I have to file a permit, but I wanted to get, see if I could, you know, if you guys.
You have to do this first, then that, well, it'll be second. If you live, if you limit the harvesting to the bigger timber and the, that'll certainly help, right? So.
Yeah, I would just like to add something too. If, if the board's comfortable with it and if Scott's comfortable with it, to have Scott Prasan be our liaison for this effort. Since he's the most experienced.
Hundred percent.
Got you. Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm motion to amend. I'm adding Scott Prasan as the liaison. Somebody going to second that?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
For both the motion and the amended, right?
For the final amended motion.
Hey, all in favor? Yep.
Aye, aye.
All right, four, nothing. Eric? Okay, Jay, thank you. I don't know if there's anything else that you need to stay for Jay.
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Good.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, Teal. Um, we're going to move on to item four, the treasurer's report. Eric, is there anything in our package related to this?
There is not. The treasurer basically said she's eight days away from, you know, the end of tax season. And she'll get back to us as soon as tax season is over. So her apologies for not having it for the packet.
That's fine. I mean, I, 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 I was in the town office and spoke to the treasurer. The treasurer had a meeting with the auditor, I believe, Tuesday, Eric, Tuesday?
Correct.
Tuesday? And uh, she has a nice binder that uh, is probably the best package this town's ever put forth to an auditor. So hopefully we, you know, there's some holes in it that we have to deal with, but I, I don't have a problem waiting to talk to her for next uh, for next month.
How is, how is the new employee working out?
Pretty good overall, I think.
Is she doing payroll yet?
Yes.
She picked that up? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and how is, do we have her, her training schedule done now? Or is she still training with Cheryl or have set time with Cheryl now? Or how are we addressing?
Uh, right now, most of the conversation, they're, they're talking and emailing back and forth. Um, they've had a few in-person sessions and uh, we've also done some in-person sessions transferring information between her and Marina. So that's been going pretty well overall. So at this point, you know, for the normal day-to-day operations, she's basically fully assumed that control that office.
So are we still having Marina come in?
Uh, I think from time to time, we're going to end up having Marina. Uh, I think from time to time, we're gonna end up having Marina come in. Because there's always little things that she's not gonna know. And it's easier to, to cut down on her, uh, training cycle by using Marina for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, item five, boards and commissions presentations. Are there any, Eric?
Uh, I do not have any presentations by boards or commissions.
All right. Any, uh, item six, any appointments?
Uh, appointments? No.
Okay. And then now item seven, resignations. I know we have something there.
So Karen Look Clean, who's the land use board clerk, uh, sent me a letter of resignation today. Oh, I, I'm sorry, go back one. Uh, the, uh, building official, as most of you know, Jim Rupper, who was officially our building official, even though Randy Heckman was our day-to-day building official. Jim has taken the job as the town administrator for Bolton. Uh, they have, uh, replaced Jim with, uh, Mr. McKinnon. He's formerly the building official for Avon. So he's been a building, uh, principal building official now for five or six years. Seems to be very competent. Um, he and Jim and Randy did a drive-through the town today. Um, and sat down with myself and Lynn, uh, and Jim, um, just to do introductions and kind of hammer things out. So as of today, uh, he is officially the Town of Andover's building official. And Randy and Jim are technically, uh, assistant building officials for the town.
We also have in here a letter from the tax collector. Do you want to do it under this section or you want to do it under your report? Where do you want to do that?
Um, so we should have a discussion about that somewhere. Um, I was assuming we do it as part of my report. Um, and talk about how we want to address that.
All right, then let's do it under that. Okay. So, uh, item eight, the town administrator's report. So let's talk about it now.
Okay, so I'm gonna first, you, you've probably read through my report. So I'm gonna talk about the late additions to the report, which are things that I got after I published the report. Obviously, we've already talked about the tree harvest with Public Works. Um, there was a request we received today from RymaCon to do the relay race to the town of Andover again. Uh, so we'll send that around to, uh, CERT and all the authorized. But I'm assuming the Board of Selectmen would be, uh, once the final application comes back to you, you as a board don't have any major issues with us. Uh, having RymaCon go through town again. Is that correct?
Yeah, Eric, I actually reached out to, uh, Matt, I think it was Matt, um, today. And I, I alerted him to the fact that we have, we have, uh, built a parking area along Lake Road now. And that there should be plenty of room to stage vehicles for that, for that relay. So he was happy with that. And, um, I think it'll, I think it'll go well. So we haven't had a problem with him in the past, so I don't see an issue.
No, overall, I think it's a very well-run, uh, organization. Um, we talked about the appointment of Mr. McKinnon. Um, I'm gonna make a suggestion that this year, we put out a transfer, transfer station permit mailer. Um, and to try to streamline the process. Because that, that every year that chews up a lot of hours labor dealing with permits. And I think we can send out a mailer and get the majority of renewals done through a mailer. And then just mail them out the sticker. Now, anytime you do that and you're not physically putting the sticker on the car, you increase the possibility of there being, you know, people playing games and putting stickers on vehicles that don't, uh, you know, don't, shouldn't have stickers. And I know some people have resisted that in the past. But I think given the amount of manpower it takes us to do this, it's worthwhile trying to streamline the process.
Are you trying to head off a log jam for some reason? Are you worried that we're, we're not, we're gonna have a problem? We've done it for, what, three years now?
Yep. Yep, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, so what's wrong with the system that we're currently using?
That's an executive session discussion. That's not an open forum discussion. If you want to have that, I'd be happy to have that discussion with you offline.
So Eric, just from my standpoint, you're trying to make this more efficient.
Yep.
That's what you're trying to.
But when I do it, we're, we have to accept the fact that it's going to be in some ways slightly less secure. There's more chances for people to cheat if we do that.
And you, but you're also suggesting that we spend what, five or six grand on mailing this stuff?
I don't think it's gonna be five or six grand.
Um, yeah, but what Adrian is saying, and he's not wrong, is how many stickers do you give out?
Uh, around 1,300.
Okay, so that's $700 and then you're gonna mail to the entire town to get it done? That's probably $3,000. So why don't, uh, when does this need to be decided?
It does not.
No, 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 no. You didn't answer the question. What's your timeline if you want to go to mailing? What's the timeline?
Well, I mean, we typically start issuing these around May 1st. But it doesn't mean that you have to do it, uh, right on May 1st. You can wait and send the mailer out mid-May, early June. I mean, they're effective July 1st.
You're gonna, I think you're gonna end up, I think, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna go with Adrian. Sorry, Adrian. I'm gonna go with Adrian. I, I think this has to be planned out a little bit more in advance. Because if you do it now and you do a mailer and you're, you're not issuing permits, you, you're gonna end up with a backlog of everybody running up at the very end. So if you came up with a plan and, and presented us a plan to do it, I, I think it would be easier for us to review and accept. You know, because I agree with you, Eric, to be more efficient. I get it. You want to be more efficient. But come to us with a plan so we know what that means. And financially, Adrian's correct. What is it?
I, i- is there, is there a, I mean, is this something you want to talk about tonight? Do you want to add an executive session? For five, 10 minutes, whatever it is that you need to explain to us?
Uh, no, I think if you read the emails I sent you earlier today, you'll understand what I'm going with.
Oh, okay. I haven't checked my emails since I got home, so.
Okay.
My bad.
I'm with Adrian, so my bad as well. All right, Eric, you're gonna continue? You're still on your report?
Uh, sure. So those were the two big things. Um, many of you know, we're still kind of getting stonewalled by AC, AES. And the treasurer's been having some significant issues getting financial data from.
We'll, 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 we'll deal with that at another time.
Yep. Understood. Um, William Bell painted the front of the town hall. It's looking spectacular now. Uh, the building's been in fantastic shape and I really appreciate his efforts.
Can we give him, can we give him, um, uh, an award? That town hall looks better than I've ever seen it.
And I'll second that. The best I've ever seen.
Best I've ever seen. That, that gentleman, that gentleman deserves a medal. All right, keep going.
On to Mr. Bell. Your appreciation for doing a spectacular job.
All right.
Um, so right now, the budget is in the hands of the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
But it's your responsibility as a board to set the date for the annual budget meeting. My suggestion is to set it for May 2nd or May 3rd. That would be my suggestion. Uh, that is on the agenda as item, uh, 10C, but I'm just giving you a heads up that I think that's appropriate. Um, the other thing I want to bring to your attention, the appeals for the Board of Assessment appeals are finished for the spring. Um, there were nine applications. Um, the Board of Assessment appeals reduced every single one of them. Um, in total, they decreased the grand list about $361,000, which represents about $11,000, uh, in decreased tax revenue for this year, just so that you're aware. Um, you know, we're still dealing with the situation on Route 6. Um, that's gonna be an ongoing issue for, for a while. We are making uh, headway on it, but we are gonna have to use our hearing officer, uh, kind of for the first time. Um, so the next thing is the finance office. Um, there is one thing we're going to have to deal with in some form or another. Uh, there were some overages noted, uh, by the auditor this time around that we're still reviewing on the town side. The town side of the budget overall is under budget. So we just have to officially move the money from department to department. Um, however, there is an, an, an issue on the AES side that the auditor's saying the AES is about $30,000 over budget for that fiscal year. Um, and the reason is they front-loaded the, uh, expense for MERS and some other benefit stuff, um, that the auditor said could not be put in that in the year before. So it was not applicable to the 2020 audit year. And when it got moved into the last year, the school didn't pick up on that. Um, and because of that, they are going to be over budget in that audit cycle. I'm not sure how we're gonna deal with that.
So basically, instead of giving money back to the town or asking to have money put away, they spent money. And now they're over budget because they did that.
Uh, yes.
Can you, can you, can you do this for us so we understand? The budget, the, the audit that was passed to the auditor was for the cycle that ended in 2022?
Correct.
And which year are you talking about? The one that ended in 2021?
No, the, the year that ended in 2022, the previous year, so which would have been
2021.
Essentially, July of 2021, there should have been some expenses booked in July that the school booked to the previous June. Um, that the auditor made them move to July, which puts them over the limit for that fiscal year.
Oh, um. So they had extra money and decided to spend it by pre, pre-purchasing, their pre-spending into the next year.
I, I understand that, but I'm trying to get the logic of the years. So I can understand it.
They put it in 20, they put it in 21, it should have been in 22.
Okay, so the audit that was already, th- th- this is the auditor telling us on the audit that he's completed already?
Yes, and the auditor pointed it out in that audit.
Yeah.
But the school never read that. It actually accounted for that in their budget for last year. They never made up, they never moved the expense into the correct year.
So they, so they had to move, they had to move it and the year that ends in 2021.
Correct.
They had to move expenses that they were putting in the year that ended in 2022. They had to move it back $30,000. So now they have additional expenses in the year ended June 30th, 2021. Right? Okay.
They have additional expenses in the year that ended in June 2022. Because they paid originally in the year before.
And now they would have extra money laying around from 21, right?
Yeah.
Probably. And that's one of my questions, is that can we go back in and transfer money from 2021? Since that should put them essentially more under budget in the 2021 year. Can we put that in their 2% non-lapsing account? And then use that money to cover the overages in the 2022 year?
That's, yes, but they gotta go to Board of Finance.
Well, that was my question for the treasurer. And she basically said, yes, maybe I'll get back to you.
Yes, they can, they gotta go, they have to go to the Board of Finance.
But.
And then they, then they have to go back. Then they, at the same time, have to ask the Board of Finance if they can now withdraw to apply to the expenses.
Oh, okay, but we haven't even completed the audit for 2022.
Doesn't matter. It's a 2021 problem. Fix the 2021.
I got you. Fix the 2021 problem. Then you gotta deal with 2022 having additional expenses. Okay. Yep. All right, then go through the proper procedures. Get the treasurer to be on board with what Adrian is saying and.
It's not up to us, it's up to the school. That's the problem.
Okay. Well, we have to have them communicate and we're gonna work on that. So.
Good luck with that.
What else do we have?
Okay, so we do have an application that we're about to submit for the state local bridge program. Um, uh, we're gonna submit two applications, one for the culvert on Hutchinson Road. And a second one for the culvert replacement on Lake Road at Basola. Um, I think we'll have good applications to submit. The problem is the, uh, state local bridge program is way underfunded. Um, so last time around, they funded, you know, less than half of the total requests they got for the state local bridge program. So I'm not saying we're gonna get it, but, um, I'm saying we'll have an application in for it. Uh, and hopefully we'll get one or the other. Um, so we can proceed and, and deal with one of the, the two. Um, we got the notice that the state has finally assigned the Bunker Hill Bridge Design to the, uh, designer of record. Um, you know, I, I think, given how long it took them to do it, that we're going to be, there's been some crazy delays in that at the state end, which is, is very frustrating. So I am not sure that they're gonna be ready for next spring's construction season. Um, you know, I have reached out to the contractor and asked them to expedite it. But given our dealings with the state so far, I think it's unlikely. So I want to be, you to be aware that that is, uh, pushed back a little bit. Um, the test borings are complete for the Long Hill Road Bridge Design. And, uh, the survey has been conducted for that. So that has been given over to Coast Jensen and Miller for the 30% design of the Long Hill Bridge, uh, project. So that is, um, ongoing. Uh, that one's going a lot faster than the other one, fortunately or unfortunately. So the other thing is that I reached back out to the state DOT and tried to get more information on the last two requests we made for the DOT. The first being, uh, installation of a traffic light at the intersection of Hendy and Route 6. They have not gotten back to me on that. Um, and the second was the speed reduction along Route 6. The engineer in charge of that did get back to me. Um, he said that was, uh, still in the works and that we should have a decision uh, in the next two weeks because they've completed the traffic study in that area.
Wow, that's good news.
I'll know one way or the other. Um, I did speak to, uh, Senator M.D. Rahman, uh, about that. And I'm gonna be sending the information to both those projects so he can follow up with the DOT Commissioner. Um, and see whether they can apply a little political pressure to that process. So those are ongoing. Um, we did meet with Senaxo to look over, uh, and get at least one cost estimate for, uh, work at the Andover Museum to satisfy the requirements for SHPO. Uh, we have not gotten a response back from yet. We just, at this point, wanted to get a budgetary quote, make sure we're still in the, in the right ballpark. Um, now that we have a contract in place for Veterans Memorial Field, um, we are still planning as soon as we get into paving se- season this year to use some of the final monies from the connectivity grant, putting in a handicapped access to the walking track at Veterans Memorial Field um as well as a banned accessible parking spot um for that. Um, I've also reached out to uh Christine Randazzo, and we're going to be using Randazzo to do some landscaping along that connectivity project to use up some of the the last money in that project. Um, the trip grant is off to DOT. Um, you know, don't know what the status of that is yet. Uh, but it was, it did rank very competitively against the other grants submitted by CROG, so I was pretty happy with that. Uh, we have not heard anything back about the Rec Trails Grant other than they have nine thousand dol- nine million dollars money, and they got thirty five million dollars worth of applications. So um that one's gonna be a long shot in some form or another. Uh, we did get a neglected cemeteries grant. Uh, we got a five thousand dollar grant from the, the state to continue working on our cemetery at Cider Mill Road. Uh, the plan with that is to build a new gate as well as to continue to clean up and repair the gravestones in that site. Uh, as most of you know, that was the very first, you know, kind of official cemetery in the town of Andover. Uh, so that is everything in my report, other than we looked at uh the state bid contract for brush grinding as well as the contract through uh Mid Ne Rock. And then we also got a bid from Distinctive Pre Care to use their grinder to grind up the brush pile and get rid of it. And Distinctive Pre Care was definitely cheaper, um just gonna hire them on their day rate for that big uh, you know, that big chipper.
What was the number, Eric?
Um, I think it's like four thousand dollars a day. But Jason seemed to think that was less than, that was basically one day of work. Um, and you know, we'll pay to haul the chips away. The last time we did it there, I think we ended up paying around fourteen thousand dollars. So I think we're gonna be less than half the cost we did it for the last time. So that seemed like a pretty good deal.
And who's, who's getting the chips?
Uh, whoever wants them. Um, you know, I offered it to the uh president of the Andover Sportsman's Club, cause I know in the past they've taken chips. Um, he said he would get back to me. Um, but they also have quite a bit of chips stockpiled on site. If you know anybody else looking for chips that can take a, you know, a hundred cubic yards or so, we'd be happy to, to
Who's gonna truck them?
Yeah. Uh, distinctiveness trucking them also.
What, what were their plans for the dispersment of them?
Uh. Where they truck them to, I have no idea. Um, same way when, when they truck chips out, you know, they go to wherever they go to. I honestly don't know the answer to that question. I can find out, though.
Well, you have four thousand dollars for the grinding and then the trucking price is gonna be, you know, probably a lot more than that.
Well, the, the truck runs us like I think it's like twelve hundred and fifty dollars a day for that, the big tractor trailer truck.
Right, those are a hundred yards, a hundred yards. How, how many loads are there? Did he say?
You know, they, they, in the past, they've done four or five in a day. And I don't think we have five truckloads of brush there. So I think we can get away with one day from that thing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's just a question of how far, what the turnaround time is.
Right, yeah. So we just gotta find a home for five loads of it?
Yeah, but unlike the normal roadside stuff, this is, you know, tend to be much more gnarly chips. So I'm not sure people are gonna want them, you know, the same way they want our regular chips.
Right. Gn- gnarly is in what? Cause it's full of? It's full of
Bigger.
Bigger. Well, material?
I, I don't think it's that so much, it's just that people tend to throw crap in there. And remember, we're only doing it every other year now. So some of that stuff's been sitting there and decaying for almost twenty four months by the time we get to it. So some of it's already partially, you know, mulched.
Okay, five hundred yards.
Something like that. Um, that's my off the top of the head calculation, by the way. Don't quote me on that one.
Yeah.
And then the last thing which we're gonna deal with later that I put in my report was the, the info about the boundary line adjustment details. Um, and you should have seen the mapping for that also.
That's gonna be on ten, ten, right?
Correct. So that's all I have unless you all have questions for me.
I have, I have a question about that three hundred thousand dollar uh State of Connecticut Bridge letter. Wh- what, that was referencing old Bunker Hill?
What three hundred thousand dollar?
No, that, that was a, there was a, a letter, and there was three hundred thousand dollars there.
We're in engineering, it's the engineering on the project.
Oh, yeah, but we don't have to pay any of that.
Nothing to us.
Right, yeah, we're not paying that, that's just what the cost is.
That's part of the program on the bridge, Scott. That the state is paying.
They just paying no, for the engineering?
Correct.
Good. If, 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 and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, you got into a program where the bridge, Bunker Hill and Long Hill Bridge are a hundred percent being paid for by the state and federal government.
They are. The difference is that we don't have to prepay any of, any of the design costs. When it comes to construction, it looks like we're going to have to rebate the contractors and then get repaid back by the state and federal government. Uh, but for the engineering part, they do that a hundred percent in-house. So we never, you know, we don't have to outlay a dime of money for that.
So it, it's, so it's kinda like when we do a, when we've done the, the federal program in the past and it's a partial pay even, we still had to out, we still had to outlay our money upfront and then wait to get paid back.
Right, which is why
Did around forever.
Right, which is why we're keeping that money, that stash of money that we put away for the Bunker Hill Bridge replacement um so we can pay that difference. Um, the reason I'm concerned that that one is behind schedule is the goal was to do that one two years before we did, cause we started it two years before the Long Hill one. So the goal was to have that fully paid for and got our money back before we have to start laying out money for the Long Hill Bridge. So my concern is if Long Hill goes well and Bunker Hill goes badly, and we're doing them both at the same time, potentially we're outlaying, we have to outlay money for both bridges and wait to get reimbursed.
Well, we, but we had talked about this before with Mike, um, the auditor, sorry. And um what we can do in that case is we can ask the Board of Finance to approve spending money out of the general fund, giving ourselves a loan, paying for it, and then when it is received back, put it back into general funds.
Right. Yep.
So, so there's a way around it. We don't have to go to taxpayers and ask for money. And then, you know, tax them for something that would then be laid back later, so.
Right.
And Eric, nothing is ever a stash.
You're right.
Okay.
That's a poor
We are, we, we are allocating funds to the appropriate use for the benefit of the taxpayer.
Correct.
All right, so any other questions for Eric? Okay. If not, let's move on to uh old business. We'll go on to nine A, the status of the community center RFP contract.
So um they got a contract back to us um middle of the day on Thursday. I started taking a look at it over the weekend. Um, I am in general okay with the contract that they're offering. What we're looking for permission, we, what we would want for permission from the, um, we'll send it, or we'll send a copy of what they sent us around, everybody else, I'll send it over to Dennis as well. Um, Eric and I had a copy of it, I think, right now is where it stood. Um, basically what we're looking for is, um, we need permission for, you know, Eric to be able to sign the general contract, which would be for the original bid amount. And then we will go out to bid on the ads to see if we can get, we're really close on the number to be able to do the things we, we believe are necessary upgrades to the building. Um, i- it's really close, and we, we believe if we go to, we go to actual RFP, then the estimates will come down and the, and I think at this point, we're within like thirty thousand dollars to be under Davis Bacon um as well as have our cushion. Um, so we think we can get that thirty thousand back in actual bid. Um, so that would be our ask is to, um, I'd like to make a motion that we can have Eric, once uh you know, once myself and um Dennis sign off on the contract, you know, agree to the contract uh that we would then um allow Eric to sign the contract to, to put us into um con- you know, contract to build.
I'll second that, Adrian. You made a motion.
I did, yep.
All right, so you, you will sit there and get Dennis the contract and the other members of the board the contract so we can at least
I, I will, I wanted to read it to make sure there were no major issues before I sent it around, so.
Okay, any further questions? Jeff, you have anything?
Um, I just wanna make sure that, should we send that to the building committee as well, Adrian? Against Rizley and Company?
Um, I don't know Ed Sirisley, I mean, the only person I think that could really add some, some value on this would probably be um, uh, Rick.
Okay. From what I know, okay.
Or possibly, possibly, um, possibly Mr. Hamburger. I mean, it's really, you know, Ed didn't really have any contract experience, um. I have some, you know, and I had to actually look up a couple of things on this, so. Um, you know, but I, I think Dennis may be Rick. I mean, if you wanna take a look at it, I'm glad, I mean, I'll send it to everybody on the board, obviously, but we have any input for you, please feel free. The other thing we're gonna have to do is, it, one of the things they are asking for in the contract um is they're, they're asking for um they are asking for um uh someone to be appointed as a, basically, our rep for the, for the um, our representative for um, the actual project that can approve change orders. Um, you know, so that's, they're not getting held up, basically. There's something that comes down the pipe, they don't wanna get into a situation where they have to stop work for a couple of weeks while we get our ducks in a row.
Would you recommend anyone, Adrian?
I mean, honestly, I think it needs to be probably myself. I, I mean, Eric could probably do it if necessary. Um, it's gotta be somebody that can be in town on a regular basis. Um, and can, you know, has a, a pretty good understanding of construction. I don't know of anyone else in the, in the community that would, that's offered to volunteer for this type of stuff. Um.
Are you offering?
So Adrian, you just talking like uh subs- you talking like change orders, like for substitutions, that type of thing, or are you talking costs?
Um, I, obviously, if it's a bigger issue, I, I think, you know, we would, we would wanna come back to the, I mean, you know, i- if it's a bigger issue and it's something that's gonna, uh, that's a budgetary issue, I think that we have to come back. You know, I, e- even if it's me, I'd wanna be able to come back to, um, you know, come back to the, to the board. But, you know, I, I'm, I can reach out to all you guys pretty quickly, I think, if we need to and and just get you guys to email me an okay or something if it's something major. But um
Yeah, if it's like a substitution, like there's a, there's a, there's a shortage, like a supply chain shortage on a material, if you wanna
Yeah, I mean, I think those are easy decisions. I think it gets, you know, if there's a, you know, if they need to make a jog or there's a foundation issue or something, and it's just structural and, and it's not gonna affect the whole project.
Price, yeah.
No, or, or pricing, yeah, but um uh, other than that, you know. So basically, it, it says, you know, owner shall provide full information regarding requirements for the owner of the project. Owner shall designate a representative who shall be fully acquainted with the project and who will have the authority to approve changes in scope of work for the project, render decisions properly, furnish information regarding owner's requirements expeditiously in a timely manner to enable the contractor to maintain his construction schedule. So basically, if they, they run into something and the, the print doesn't match what they think they're doing, they may say, hey, you need to come down here and approve what you, what did you mean by this, or what did the designer really mean by this? So those types of things as well, you know.
All right, Adrian, you're appointed.
You're appointed. All righty. Do we need to make a motion about that?
Well, we haven't voted on, we haven't voted on the first.
Oh, yeah, I think if we make the motion, we, we probably make that as part of the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Just like, just like we do with Scott.
All right, so the amended motion would be that um we would authorize Eric Anderson, upon approval of myself and uh Dennis, to be able to sign the contract. Um, and that I would be the appointed owner of, uh, owner's responsibilities designee.
Second that. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, four nothing. Okay, let's uh move on to uh nine B, Hop River Homes update. Anything, Eric?
Uh, no, just that we have a agreement in place with Opera Homes that enables us to use it for softball going forward and gives us the right to put a water line and an electrical line under the road to feed that property. Uh, the only thing they were adamant about is that if the town even considers putting the lights up for it, that they wanna be part of that discussion very early. And I assured them that at this point, we, we have no real intention of, of providing that with any sort of lighting.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, nine C, recognizing Andover residents. Um, I say we move this one to next week, cause Paula was not able to attend tonight. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. Um, nine D, a cool program contract. Any update on that, or should we move that to the next?
So I think Dennis wanted to talk to you about that a little bit. I mean, I've reached out to Karma multiple times by that, and I finally, you know, gave up with the contract people and went directly to our Karma rep and had a little bit of a come to to see the light uh meeting with him on Friday. Um, but they still have not gotten us a review of the contract, which since it's been more than a month is a little bit annoying to me. Um, but I think Dennis had some things he was concerned with in the contract, so maybe uh it would be wise to have him speak. I do not have a revised version or comments back from Ker.
Okay. Dennis, you got anything for us on cool, or should we just move on? Okay, let's push that one to next, next month. Um, nine E, uh Andover Personnel Policy Discussion.
Hey, I don't wanna do this, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I thought I was gonna sneak by you, Dennis, honestly.
Tried to sneak it by me.
Yeah.
I didn't realize I was muted. I, I know what happened, my other phone rang and it was loud. Okay, um, yeah, I uh, I've written about five or six drafts of this thing. I just did another one today, tonight, finished it up during the early part of the meeting. While you were talking about the uh, Adrian brought up uh fifty-two dash five fifty-seven K, which I will look at, Adrian. I'm intrigued. Anyway, uh, yeah, a lot, the last I recall was Paula King came back with a uh a draft that was submitted by um, maybe by an attorney for cool, I don't, I don't know, it wasn't very well written in my view. But um, you know, hey, anyway, um, I, I, we had gotten feedback before from Karma. And I know they didn't want us to provide secondary coverage for um, cool. I know that, a- and, and they also probably wanted more uh extensive coverage from cool, and I think now they're providing it. Uh, and uh two million general liability, one million per incident. And um, so what I did tonight was I, I did, I, I had, I had one big problem with what they, in addition to that, was what they submitted, and that was they had taken out completely a section that I put in there allowing us to uh terminate a section that I put in there allowing us to, uh, terminate the contract if they, uh, don't, uh, follow it substantially in a material way. And, uh, I, I, I have never, I've never seen a contract like that where you couldn't get out of it if the other side messes up. So I put something back in there, which I thought might be acceptable to them where, where the Board of Selectmen could vote to terminate the contract on the basis of a finding by the board that a material violation has been committed by Cool, but I gave them the opportunity to ask for a special meeting with the board before the termination became effective. And, you know, just to give them an opportunity, I, just to give you guys some more work, you don't, you don't have enough work to do. Uh, not that that's going to happen, but I, I just don't like the idea of not being able to get out of a three-year contract if, 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 if the other side, uh, doesn't follow it. So, uh, I draft, put it together, drafted it and I, and I've sent, I just emailed it to Eric a few minutes ago. So, uh, Paula is not here. Uh, the one thing I'm concerned about, Jeff, is that it is April. A school ends, I guess, in around, what, around June tenth or so? Fifteenth, I don't know. And, you know, the, the summer program is going to be, they're going to be wanting, wanting to recruit people for the summer program. But I think this is something that we ought to get done. I, I, that's, you know, it's not my call, but that's my suggestion. And, um, anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send copies of the draft I wrote today to all of you right now by email, if you don't mind. And maybe, maybe you could, uh, you know, we could address it finally at our, at your next meeting. I think we probably should. And, um, whether we hear back from Karma or not, hopefully, hopefully we will. But, um, I think what I've done is I've tried to meet Cool halfway. Uh, they're not getting everything they wanted. I think they believe that they are, you know, they're, they're, they're the partner in this of the Board of Ed. And we all know what that, you know, what that could entail. They are not. We, the, the, the building is owned by the town. Uh, the, uh, the property is owned by the town, the bus they want to use is owned by the town. So anyway, uh, I, I want to send that along to you unless you object. That's where I want to leave it right now, but the rest is up to you.
Go ahead, go ahead and send it to us, Dennis, and we need to get this decided by next month so we can allow.
I think so. I mean, I, I know you all support the program. And, and I, and, but, you know, we, we, we don't want to hand them a blank check. I mean, that's my view. All right, I'm going to send it over and I thank you, I thank you so much for your time, uh, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Should we even wait till the next meeting? I mean, if the verbiage is okay with Dennis, should we just send it over to Cool? I mean, I trust, I, I trust our attorney's opinion. I mean, I'm not going to add any value to it by looking at it.
Uh, I, I'm okay with it, Jeff, going to Cool because Cool is.
We need to expedite this because I mean, summer camp is going to be like, like you said, like Dennis said, we're going to be hiring people and they're going to want to get ramped up for the summer season. So I, I think we need to kind of expedite this a little bit and make sure that they get it in a timely matter.
Okay. So Dennis also send it to Cool? Or Eric send it to.
I, I think Eric can do that. I'm, I'm going to send you copies of it anyway.
Yeah.
I don't forget, I drafted this in haste today. Uh, I started working on it about, uh, six, six twenty. And I finished it about when, uh, just as, as Adrian was citing that statute regarding trees. And, uh, so, uh, you know, if there's, if there's anything wrong with it, let me know. But I, I mean, I, I, you know, or Cool can let us know. But I, but I agree, Jeff, that, uh, it is something that we should expedite. I mean, we know that we're going to, we're going to do this. This is something that's important. We just want to do it on our own terms and not, not on somebody else's.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, nine E, Andover Personnel Policy Discussion.
So I would like to punt that till next month.
It's fine. Okay. Uh, ten, new business, um, uh, ten A.
No, we forgot the vehicle, Jeff.
Oh, I am so sorry. You're right, Jeff. Uh,
Senior vehicle F.
Nine F, senior vehicle purchase.
Okay. And why I've added this tonight is, um, I, I attended or actually watched one of the Board of Finance meetings. And I'm a little confused and I think the board, we need, kind of need to revisit this. Um, it appears that the vehicles in next year's budget, is this a different vehicle or the same vehicle? Because I thought we voted two months ago that we were going to purchase this vehicle with, um, unexpendated funds from this year. So has that changed or?
So I, I can shed some light on that.
Okay.
What I asked the Board of Selectmen, which ultimately you agreed to, is to put it into the budget for next year. Because when you're sitting this far out at the end of the year, being able to predict where you're going to be in the budget is very difficult. Um, you know, there's just too many unknowns. We've already tapped quite a bit of the, uh, contingency for other things. So I didn't want to say definitively one way or the other, we would have room in the budget to be able to do it this year. Um, I did have that discussion with the Board of Finance at their last meeting last Wednesday. Um, and the, we discussed a number of things. One of them is the fact that the line item for the resident state tripper, um, will, looks like it will come in considerably under what we budgeted uh, for this current fiscal year. And that difference is probably going to be about what that vehicle costs or maybe a little bit more. Um, and we have a little bit better feel for what our revenues coming in are. Um, so given that, I think I'm fairly confident we can purchase that vehicle in this fiscal year. I can't guarantee it, but I'm pretty sure we can without going over on the town's budget. Um, and the board asked, Board of Finance asked me that, that's what I told them. And they made a decision to remove the purchase of the vehicle from next year's budget. Uh, because they, they're apparently confident enough that there's room in this year's budget to be able to support the vehicle purchase.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to get an update on that because I was a little confused. And I just don't want to make sure we're, we're double booking a vehicle, that's all.
Right. And, and it's clearly written in the last month, minutes that we wanted it for this year.
Okay, so we should be able to purchase this at the end of this fiscal budget season, which would be July first, if we have, uh, unexpendated funds, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to make that decision earlier than that. I mean, we're going to have to make that decision closer to the end of May, so we do it in this fiscal year, but.
Yeah, because, yeah, and, and we have to give the dealer a heads up because they will have to locate the vehicle for us. So the sooner, sooner the better that we can get the ball rolling on that. I know it's, I, I know it's a, it's, it's something that's really needed for senior transportation right now. It would be nice to get a fuel-efficient vehicle to haul them around. So, um, okay, I just, I just want a clarification on that. I'm good. Jeff, you're muted.
Uh, ten, uh, new business, uh, ten A, Selectman Resolution in Support of the Twenty Twenty Two Steve Grant.
Okay, so, uh, because the Steve Grant project got assigned to DECD, uh, they require a written resolution by the Board of Selectmen. And I explained to the guy that, uh, we didn't need to do that because in fact, it was approved at a town meeting, which supersedes the Board of Selectmen. And I sent him that and he said, yeah, we still require a resolution. So all you're signing is the fact that we've already gotten, uh, you know, they've given us the grant and you're, uh, authorizing that we accept the grant.
Okay. I make a motion that we sit there and,
Sign a resolution.
Say, a signed a resolution in support of the Twenty Twenty Two Steve Grant.
I'll second that, Jeff.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Four nothing. Okay.
Now, can you guys all go in and sign the originals in the town clerk's office? Or do you want her to, uh, magically make your signatures here?
Uh, I can do it Monday.
Okay.
I'll text Carol, let her know my, my, she can put my signature on.
Yeah.
I'll text Carol also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, ten B, uh, Budget Message Recommendations.
So the reason why I'm kind of asking you this is, I, I mean, the budget message is primarily the Board of Finance's uh, affair. But if there's specific things you as a Board of Selectmen want to include in the budget message, like I know Adrian has asked the Board of Selectmen to include a note in there stating that we are going to spend, you know, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of money from the multi-use business building fund, excuse me, to fit out the senior center after it's built. Um, if there are other things you want to include in the budget message, let me know, uh, so that I can relay that to the Board of Finance.
Anybody else have any other issues?
I mean, do we want to make a statement about, you know, how we feel like we've, you know, we've been successful in the last couple of years of, um, we feel like we've, you know, gotten the town to a place where it can fund its needed functions finally. And, you know, we feel like, you know, maybe this is, you know, this is, you know, uh, with, between the reevaluation and the, and the, you know, the adjustments that have come down the pike, that we're in a good place, you know, and, and we've, you know, have tried to put forward a budget that was respectful of the current economy. Um, and with the, you know, with the, the Board of Finance have tried to craft what we feel is a, a, a good and reasonable budget that's not going to take away from the town, but is not adding extensively, you know?
When's it got to be, um, sent out, Eric?
Well, I would assume that would come out after the, uh, workshop, but before the town budget meeting. So, um, presuming that you pick a date for the town meeting and you select May second or third, I assume you'd want to, that would want to go out um, prior to that. So, um, I'm going to be on vacation from the nineteenth to the twenty-fifth. I'm assuming as soon as I come back from that, we'll have basically a final budget from the Board of Finance. And I will be working very hard to craft that and get it through the Board of Finance prior to the meeting.
I mean, what you guys thought, I mean, we've, we've put a lot of effort into budgets and, and last couple of years, Eric has done a ton of work to try to figure out where we need money and, and how much we need. And I just feel like we've put a lot of effort into this. And I think the, the Board of Finance has been good about, um, backing us and reviewing it and sort of finding the middle ground. I feel like townspeople kind of need to know that and that we are being, you know, that this is not a, it's not an over the top budget, it's a respectful budget, you know?
Adrian, I have no problem with what you, how you stated it before. If, if that's how the board wants, I mean, I have no problem with what you said because you're a hundred percent right. I think this, I think the members of this board have done a, a very good job. I think Eric has done a very good job. The town looks much better. We're trying to use money appropriately. I mean, look at all the grants that Eric has, has gotten.
Yeah.
I have no problem with what you said, how you said it. You just want to write it up. I have no problem including it.
Yeah, I, I don't mind writing it up and getting over to Eric and, and maybe, um, Mark Brinker as well and, and make sure he's okay with what we're asking and you know, can, can add his two cents as well from the Board of Finance.
Yeah, wouldn't even hurt to put the dollar values in there, just to take for the bridges and the grants and all the things that we've gotten, just to say, hey, this is what we've gotten that you're not getting taxed for.
Yeah. You know, I, I think it's important. I think, you know, especially this year, we are going to be asking them to fund a fire truck. Um, but it's something that the, the fire department has worked very hard on. You know, um, and has, you know, they're trying to replace two pieces of apparatus with one. That's a huge tale, you know? So.
Okay. All right, so why don't we sit there and work to get that, that notice with the, uh, the bu- budget message crafted and, and.
Yeah. So Eric, I'll coordinate with you. As soon as you're back, just hit me up and we'll, we'll put something together.
Okay.
Right, so ten.
I mean, I want to remind you that's mostly a Board of Finance responsibility. But if there, the specific things that you want to highlight, I'll, I'd be happy to, to put in there.
I, I a hundred percent agree with you, but I, I, in, it could just be that we've had contentious budgets the last couple of years, but I haven't really seen much come out of the Board of Finance on this. Um, and I, I think, you know, they've just had a lot to deal with. Um, so I think if we can help them a little bit, if, if, you know, we're not trying to offend them, you know, we're trying to support them, you know, and, and support the town too. So.
Sure, understood.
Okay, so ten C, set a date for the town budget meeting. May second would be the best date for me. That's Tuesday. So out of the days that Eric's identified.
And I'm trying to do this, you know, not that I necessarily think this is going to be a contentious budget season that goes really long. But this gives us the maximum chance of having a budget complete prior to when we need to send out the mill rate, uh, regardless of whether it's complete or not.
Hmm.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that date?
Oh, good.
Adrian?
No, I'm good.
All right, so I make a motion that we set the town budget meeting, the, the A for May second, seven o'clock.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four nothing. Okay, uh, ten D, uh, Boundary Line Agreement.
So I'm going to give you a little background on this. So there is information about two surveys that we have to deal with. Uh, the first is a property that, um, borders the town property that the transfer station is on. Um, and it borders Burnet Brook Road. One of the town residents recently bought that property. We've known for a long time that the boundary line for that, uh, was screwed up and, um, it's you know, been in contention for a long, it hasn't been well established, but let's put it that way. So, uh, the owner hired a surveyor. Um, they hired, uh, Rob Hellstrom Land Surveying to go out and spend an ordinary amount of time trying to piece this together. The majority of the survey, they have reasonable data to support what the boundary is. But there's a long boundary line between the town's property and the applicant's property that is fairly indistinct. Um, there's just not an agreement between the, uh, between the various sets of mapping and deed descriptions. Um, now, I don't want to take the surveyor's word for it. My intention is to send this all off to the town's zoning attorney, Mark Brants, to review and just make sure he agrees with that surveyor's take on this. Um, but if that is the case, the only way we're really going to resolve it is for both property owners representing the town and the owner to come up with a boundary line agreement and just say, okay, from this point forward, this is what we're going to establish as the line. Um, the second thing about it is one of the pieces that I have been trying to get for years um, is the part of Burnet Brook where Burnet Brook and the rail trail intersect. Um, and we tried to negotiate with the previous owner to purchase this or purchase an easement on it through open space. We were not successful with the previous owner. Um, this owner is more agreeable to it. Uh, as part of the boundary line agreement, uh, the town would also take possession of the property that borders the rail trail. It's not a huge portion. It's only about point seven acres. But in a sense, it's the most scenic spot um, on Burnett Brook. It's really the, and it also gives us, you know, right now, the parking area there is partially on DEP property and partially on uh, the, the residence property. Um, and even though they've allowed cars to park there, it's, it's very definitely on private property. So it would give us ownership of that. So my suggestion, based on discussing this with the town's attorney, with Dennis, is that he feels that this will require an eight twenty-four. is that he feels that this will require an eight twenty-four referral to Planning and Zoning Commission for a municipal improvement. Because we're getting that little parcel of land that will have to go to town meeting anyway. So what I would like is if you guys are generally okay with this plan, then I would like to, just to save a little time, I would like to do the eight twenty-four referral now to Planning and Zoning Commission with your blessing and have them review this and then have Mark Brants review this. And then bring it back to the Board of Selectmen once those things are done, uh, to set a town meeting to approve this if you're in agreement with it. Um, I have discussed this with Joe Wagner, our wetlands agent. I've also discussed this with Hank Bruner from the Conservation Commission to get the conservation permissions to take on, uh, you know, any environmental issues with that. Um, and these both are in agreement with, uh, the basic plan. Um, so that's where I'm at on this. Do you have any questions for me regarding this portion?
I, I do. I do. The, the line, the southerly line, it used to intersect with the, uh, the lots that are next to the dump there. It, it, and then it used to go through that split rail, rail fence there. So that line was came off of, and it, it, it came into the back of there. Is that what it used to do, Eric?
So the, the answer is that the, the surveyor, when we first talked about it, um, they hadn't found that additional iron pin along the Kudo property. Uh, so given the pins that they had and the data they had, he basically said, look, there's a lot of ambiguity in this. We don't know where this line should really be. The last hard point that we know is the corner boundary of the Kudo property. And we think that we know which stone wall they're referencing, where it intersects the rail trail. We're not positive, but we think we know. Um, and based on that, we know up to the stone wall. And then we know on the other end, but there's no definitive, there's too much disagreement between those two to say, you know, where, you know, so that line could be different by a couple acres in either direction. In fact, one of the, the boundary surveys, you know, has that property like on the wrong side of Burnet Brook Road. So at this point, I don't think there's enough information to say where it is. Um, I'm willing to say, if we do this, we're not giving up anywhere near as much as we're getting by getting the really cool frontage on, uh, Burnett Brook. So I look at this and say, the town is ultimately getting what it really wants out of it, which is the rest of the parking lot and the most beautiful picturesque section of the river under town control. And so therefore, you know, whether we're losing an acre or we're gaining an acre, it's a reasonable compromise for the town. That's my take of it, but your opinion may vary.
So are we gaining? Or what's the gain and what's the loss?
I, I don't think anybody knows, Scott. That's the point. I mean, you know, the surveyor wasn't, in, in the next one, we're gonna talk about the difference is only five or seven feet. In this one, the surveyor's not willing to say within hundreds of feet where the actual boundary is. So, you know, I don't know. That's why.
Is it any used, used land? Are we talking about any used land along this boundary lines?
Uh, we're not talking about land we use. And we're not giving, everything we're giving up is in the two hundred foot upland review area anyway. So it's not like it's something we're going to build on or do anything. You know, it's not like we're going to construct anything on that land anymore.
Okay.
And my, my only question is, are, are we, do we think that we're getting enough?
Do I think so? Yes. Um, but that doesn't mean you think so. And I mean, my problem is, that's why I want to send it to Mark and get his best take on, you know, what he thinks the boundary lines are and should be. Because you know, it's one of these cases where you, you've got a bunch of different mapping and you've got a bunch of different deed descriptions and nothing matches. So where you put that, you know, is very hard to, to determine.
Right. The, the original line you're saying used to go through that, that stockade fence, that, that's the line that you're talking about?
There was no original line. What the surveyor said originally when we talked to him is that in his mind, the, the two points, the eastern part of the survey, they know up until the, the boundary, but actually it wouldn't be the eastern, more like the northern part of the survey. Correction, the western part, they know to where the Kudo property boundary is. And then on the other side, they know to roughly the same, the, the stone wall. Those are the two things where they think they know where, where known points are. But they don't know how the line is supposed to be drawn between the two of them. So one option is to draw it straight. Um, but then the surveyor came back to us later and said, you know, we also realized there's another iron pin along the property boundary of the Kudo property and it's in a straight line. So there's no reason for there to be a pin there if it wasn't a boundary line for something, which is why they gave us the alternative that they give here.
I mean, does anybody have a problem to allow Eric to work this out? I mean, Scott, do you have a problem with them allowing to work it out and figure out what the best?
No, I'm, my, my only question is, Jeff, if, where was the line first? Where did we establish it? Like, with the towns? That, nobody knew, but all I'm saying, are we losing three or four acres to gain a half an acre? Or are we, how far off is it? The, you know, the gain and loss? That's all I'm asking.
Right. And, and to be honest, that's one I want the attorney to weigh in on because I don't know.
Well, has, because hasn't, hasn't somebody?
Eric, how long is the, how, how long of a span is the property line we're talking about? That's in dispute.
Uh, about eight hundred feet.
Eight hundred or more.
Okay. So it's eight hundreds of feet long. And how far do they think it's off? A couple hundred feet?
Um, it could be up to a couple, couple hundred feet, depending on where they draw it from and to.
All I'm saying, maybe we could get more, more land along the Brook up there, Eric. That's all I'm saying. That pin could be from a, a, a survey or a, a parcel that was done in the, you know, whatever, the eighteen hundreds and was lots where it changed.
To, to Scott's point, if it's off by two hundred feet and it's eight hundred feet long, that's four acres almost exactly.
You could lose a lot of land and we, we could stand to gain a lot of more that, of that, that land that you want over there by doing exactly what you're saying. But I'm, I'm just wondering if, if we're pushing just a little further.
But the surveyor also said on the other end, they could just as easily justify that initial point in it being the next stone wall over and draw the line from the next stone wall over on the eastern side, you know, which would give them two plus more acres. Um, so, you know, I.
The way, the way I look at it, you could, you could even move our line over to intersect the bottom of the southerly point of that, that one wall and, and swing it over. It'll still hit that. It'll still hit that line. And then we get more river frontage on that end. Um, I, 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 I just don't know enough to say good or if it's good or bad.
Well, I mean, that's why I'm proposing to send it to Mark Brants and get his review of this because I, I don't feel like I'm qualified, but short of us hiring a surveyor to go out and survey our parcel and then try to, you know, meet in the middle, you know, which, you know, I know they spent somewhere around ten grand on the survey. And I know if we're going to survey an eighty acre parcel to prove them wrong or to give it our best guess, you know, we're going to be out fifteen thousand bucks or more. Um.
Or more, yeah.
Yeah, probably or more.
Well, why don't you send it to, I mean, you know, we could beat this all night. Why don't you send it to the attorney? See what the attorney thinks, you know, and, and whatever, you know, see if you can get a two to one rate exchange on the, on the parcels. You know, they get double in the, because it's still on a wetlands uplands review and go from there.
It's, it's even longer of it. It's, it's, I see two six hundred and a three forty. That's twelve hundred, fifteen hundred feet. We could be losing a bundle of land there.
Okay. So what do you want me to do then? What's, what's your goal?
To attorney brands.
Yeah, let him, let him look at it.
Okay. So no eight twenty-four attorney brands review. I'll bring it back to you at the next meeting or whenever.
I mean, no, can we back up? But why are we saying that? Even if, even if we lose, if, if we lose, if it's six acres going to them and we can get whatever, two acres down below, isn't that still a benefit? To Eric's point, it's two acres that we want and that improve our situation. And it's give or take six acres that is restricted access and use anyways, because it's in an upland review.
Ri- right. But Adrian, they're, they're only, he's, we're getting a ha- it looks like a half an acre.
But I mean, we're getting the piece we want.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a bird in the hand versus nothing.
Yeah.
Wow. Versus getting money.
I'm, I'm, I'm all for, uh, you know, getting that piece of land, Eric. Eric, I know it well and it's, it's beautiful, but if I could get double, I'd like to get double.
Well, we all want to get more all the time, but you know, again, it's, it's in an upland review area. So it's not great property he's getting. It's not like we're given a mountaintop and a nice view.
Well, he's getting waterfront.
He's got waterfront.
Yeah, well, he's getting, now he's, yeah.
And it's waterfront, as you know, well, know very well, is very restricted. So.
Scott, if you, if you would like to, well, first of all, send it to attorney brands because we should get a legal opinion and, and, and Scott, if you'd like to work with Eric on, on that, the potential breakdown of what's going on, please do.
Sure. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Can we move forward on the review though?
Sorry, Scott.
Can we move forward with the review?
Yeah, I would say let him look at it.
With the eight twenty-four, eight twenty-four, right, Eric?
Yeah, but you're doing an eight twenty-four on a specific line.
Yeah, you, you can't really do it until we know what's, what's going to happen.
No problem. We'll wait.
Okay. Fair enough.
I mean, this is not something we have to accomplish in the next six months. It's just hanging out there as, as something to be done. So.
So boundary line agreement be on spin.
So this came up as a, uh, question that occurred with the survey that we've recently constructed or conducted of the two properties. Um, basically BSC has said they're not willing to sign off on this as an A two survey because they think the original survey on a portion of that land done by anchor engineering is wrong. Um, but there's enough difference between that survey and the two, uh, boundary descriptions that there's a section in there that is not well defined. And so their suggestion is that we pursue a lot line agreement between the town of Andover and the property owner uh, to, um, to sort that out. We're not talking about a big area. Um, he thinks there's only somewhere between a five and 10 foot discrepancy between where the two lines are. So, you know, we're talking about something in the neighborhood of a thousand uh, square feet of property. So is that something that you're willing to consider? Pursuing a lot line agreement with?
Well, just tell, tell me where, what line? In the overview with the school in it, just tell me which line, this is north and south, right?
Look at the.
Are we talking about in, in ambiguity?
So as far as I understand it, it is the line for the, if you look at the survey in the anchor engineering, yeah, the snippet of that, it's the area shaded in red was his concern.
Mm-hmm.
Roughly that area was the issue.
What, what line, which line exact? You don't know which line it was?
As far as I understand, as you're viewing it, it's the vertical line there, which would be the east-west line where it jogs, it goes under that little jog.
Yeah. So one end of it is in the wrong place or something?
He thinks the whole thing is moved over. Um, like he thinks that where the anchor engineering actually pinned it doesn't correlate to where the actual boundary is.
No. Is the adjacent landowner okay with just changing it to what the new land, uh, surveyor wants?
Well, once I get the final mapping from BSC, um, I've talked to the landowner briefly. We will sit down with them if you as a board are willing to even agree to consider a boundary line adjustment. If you're not, then it doesn't matter. We just file it with an ambiguous line.
Yeah. No, on this one, I would be in favor of just getting a boundary line agreement. I'm just one though.
Boundary line agreement.
That's two.
Adrian, Jeff?
I don't have, I don't really have a take either way. I'm fine with this. If you get the agreement, are they going to A two it at that point or no?
Then they can.
I mean, they'll, they'll produce the final A two. Basically what he said was Rob said, or sorry, Mike Healy said they could produce an A two survey, but they would have to indicate on the survey that that particular boundary is not established as part of the survey. Um, whereas once there's a boundary line agreement, they could say it's established as part of the boundary agreement. Done.
And, and the landowner is open to the boundary line agreement?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's good. So, uh, it's a win.
Okay.
So is that it for, um, for those issues, Eric?
Uh, that's all I need.
Okay. Uh, item eleven, approval of minute meetings for the March sixth, twenty twenty-three budget workshop and the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and budget workshop. So we want to make a motion? I make a motion that we approve the two minutes for the two dates identified.
Second.
Right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eric, uh, item twelve, budget. Are there any appropriation transfers or over expenditure requests?
Not at this time.
Okay. Uh, item thirteen, tax collectors report.
Um, the only thing I want to say on that is you did get the letter of resignation for the tax collector. Um, and sometimes sooner rather than later, we need to have a discussion um, whether we do it that in the open or in executive session about what the approach should be towards replacing the tax collector. Cause we need to come up with an approach, uh, fairly quickly.
When is the resignation effective?
August.
Uh, basically beginning of August.
Guys, at the beginning of August or the end of August?
Might have been the end of August. But anyway, I mean, she's agreed to stay on and, you know, I'm. You know, I mean, it's not like a hard fast date, like if we told her she had asked her to put it off for one month, that would be. An issue.
Do you have a plan or an idea?
I have some possibilities.
Okay, and you appear that you want to talk about those at executive session in a future meeting.
I think that might be a good idea.
Okay, next meeting, let's have it. Okay. Um. Well, the tax collectors report, we collected a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in the prior month, so. We'll move on. Uh, department reports, does anybody have any issues on any of the department reports that were presented?
There is one refund request under the tax collectors report for a hundred and forty one dollars ninety seven cents. To Brian Lenzary.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion for that one? Where is it? Oh, there it is.
It's on page thirty four.
I'm sorry, can you repeat? I I my connection is not working great here.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the tax refund for a hundred and forty one dollars and ninety seven cents to Brian Lenzary. It's a refund of an excess payment.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, that's four nothing. Um, any questions or any other issues on any of the the departmental reports that were provided?
Nope.
Uh, Eric, um, just as a secondary request, I asked this the last time, did you do any reviewing on the the permit receipts for the building department?
You know, that I did not do.
All right, can you do that just to check out the totals? Because I know. I know there's some new, there's new building, new homes under construction on Lake Road, and I just. You know, that's always been a mental thing for me is how those building permit. So calculated out how much money the town is getting for those. For those property constructions. So if you can look at that, that would be great. Finally get to that. Anybody else? Okay. Then let's move on. So, uh, item fifteen correspondence, was there any correspondence, Eric?
Uh, none that's significant.
Okay, uh, item sixteen, public speak, Linda Fish. All right. Move on, Joanne Ebert.
She she just unmuted, Jeff.
Oh, no, I just to say, no, I couldn't find the button.
It's all right. I was helping you out there. Uh, Joanne Ebert.
Thank you.
Uh, Leanne Hutchinson. Okay. Um, and I believe Leanne is this, she she does the Zoom and the phone, I believe.
Phone, yep.
So I believe we're done. Anybody else that uh I haven't given appropriate time to for the public to say what they'd like to say to us? As long as it's all positive, there's nothing negative. No, okay, um, item seventeen.
Let's go. Make the motion to a churn.
All right, uh, Jeff Murray, are you seconding that?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, good night.